How are you? Like, I got stuck by a train.
I thought maybe you guys were on some way for Thanksgiving.
Sure, all the way to 27th Street, the train was still there when I pulled up. I actually heard the train horn, I was like.
A lot of times when I come in here, I'll go 27th just because I don't want to get caught. Tonight, I took my chances, but.
How are you doing?
I'm doing great.
Those Christmas cards, those really Christmas cards. I hope they are.
Most of them are filled with.
If we care much to me, where they are. These are like people that tell me. This week? Then next week's just getting.
I forgot to say, at five and a week ago now, at 3:20, which I didn't get the call, because I was at 3:20 in the morning, one of my constituents called to leave me a message so I could hear the train since the train was there. I mean, I didn't hear the phone, you know, I didn't hear. About the whole.
That's what I do. I call them back at two, two or three.
It is pretty loud. I mean, I'm all the way from Bryant to Sunny Lane, and there are times that we're standing in our best little weekend here the train.
Okay, here's.
Pretty good, how are you?
Is the engineer on that train that time not working? Does not like us. He blows out. Pretty sure.
I'd lay on it.
You were co-engineering.
Yeah.
Yeah, 100% attendance.
How do you know that?
Like, everybody's here.
Oh, yeah. I thought you meant me.
No, no. Everybody's here.
I've got three more minutes.
Between me and you.
Yeah, yeah.
What baby, dude, in the lightest forest. They're burning my flesh.
I didn't even notice, I was never that. Maybe that one pointed you more than anything.
I don't know, but I'm ready enough to do it. Why are you red?
I can't see that special.
Yeah, the mayor got a bit last meeting and turned a few of them toward me.
Turn away. Do what? Oh, no, that quad turret. No, that's not really six thirty-one. Oh, my gosh. Would you call the row, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Terry Kavner?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held November 6, 2017. Item B, approve the issuance of a $50 Christmas stipend to employees per council resolution. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017-2018 in the amount of $2,000,00921,726.7 cents.
May I have your proof?
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. It's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is consider awarding bid number 171802, six scoreboards for girls' soc-- or, excuse me, girls' softball to Moody scoreboards and equipment in the amount of $40,995.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, city accepted bids for six new scoreboards for the Girls' Softball Association at Buck Thomas Park. The low and best bids with Moody scoreboards in the amount of $40,995. We've used Moody before. We had, I believe, ten scoreboards installed about two years ago when we used them. They did an excellent job and come very highly recommended, and they do a lot of these throughout the metro. This is a budgeted item, and the scoreboards would be paid for using hotel motel funds as well as the quarter cent sales tax that was approved for parks. So with that, we have any take any questions? One thing I would add is with, our goal is to have these installed by the 2018 softball season.
Make a motion to approve?
Sorry, thank you. We have a motion in a second.
I'm just sorry, I didn't know who seconded, Terry.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider awarding bid number 1718-03, 12 bleachers for Buck Thomas Baseball Fields to Schultz Industries Incorporated in the amount of $47,047.20.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we solicited bids for 12 bleachers for our baseball league at Buck Thomas. We received eight bids, and you'll notice on the bid tab, there's a non-install price and an install price. We just wanted to see if there was value in having them installed. We believe that it's best value for the money that the city crews put them together and do the install. Saves quite a bit of money. So staff recommends council award bid 1718-03 to Schultz Industries in the amount of $47,047.20. We should have these received and installed by the start of the baseball season in 2018. And like the scoreboards and softball, we'll use hotel motel tax and the parks quarter cent. Without behalf of taking questions.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Item number five is consider adopting resolution number 88817 establishing the 911 emergency telephone fee rate for calendar year 2018.
Mayor and Council, this is to renew the 911 rate, and then also with the ordinance, the statutory change was made a couple of years ago to where the, when the telephone companies collect the money, they used to just send it to ACOG, now they send it to the tax commission. So we need to authorize the tax commission to send it to ACOG to operate the 911 system as opposed to just sending it to us.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number six is consider adopting resolution number 88917 as authorized recipient of any and all 911 fees and taxes under Oklahoma law does hereby for good and valuable consideration grant and convey unto 911 ACOG all of its rights, title, interest, estate, and every claim and demand both at law and in equity in and to all of the following property, 100% of all fees and taxes for the provision of the 911 emergency telephone service to which it may be entitled from any telephone service provider or the Oklahoma Tax Commission of the State of Oklahoma as authorized under statutory authority of Title 63 Oklahoma statutes or any other legal authority, together with all the singular rights thereto belonging for the duration and balance of the fiscal, entire fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. Motion to approve? All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between Norman, Oklahoma City, and Moore for a joint public education efforts in an amount not to exceed $5,000 to comply with the Lake Thunderbird total maximum daily load, the TMDL compliance plan as approved by the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality.
Mayor and Council, the approved Lake Thunderbird TMDL compliance monitoring plan does require the cities of Moore, Norman, and Oklahoma City to undertake public education activities in an effort to reduce the amount of pollutants being released into the Lake Thunderbird watershed. Since the time that plan was approved, our stormwater manager from the city of Moore has met with his counterparts from Norman and Oklahoma City on a regular basis. They're trying to determine what, if there are any activities or tasks that we can combine our efforts on in order to make the most use of the, of the, our staffing levels and also see if there's any economies of efficiencies with, if we can work together. The public education has been identified as an area where the three communities can work together to provide a unified public education campaign towards the same goal. Excuse me. If the MOU is approved, it would approve an expenditure not to exceed $5,000, and this is for each individual city. And the money would go to market research and analysis to determine a target audience, a logo design, branding, identity package, and website development. That's just going to be for a partial of the $5,000. Any remaining funds that are left over would be used for any additional costs for advertising such as radio, print, and events. The TM, the Lake Thunderbird Task Force would be branded, and my understanding is that the city of Norman has agreed to host a webpage. It would not be incorporated within the city of Norman's website. It would be not be specific to any particular city. It would be branded as the Lake Thunderbird Task Force, which would be all three of the cities combined. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Why are we part of this? We don't get any water from this watershed project. We've been sued several times, and Norman has never cooperated with us on anything. We called out, it was about 15 years ago, we called out the SWAT team, they charged us $3,000. So why are we helping them educate their citizens in the water they drink?
Well, we are involved in the Lake Thunderbird TMDL simply because our, all of our stormwater sheds off into Lake Thunderbird.
Well, if they quit, you know, spraying the pesticides into the watershed, maybe that would help.
Right, that, you're right. And so we're trying to come up with some public education to notify our residents plus residents of Oklahoma City and Norman to try to prevent them from doing things like that.
So is this something that we're required to be a part of?
Yes, yes.
Who required it?
It is administered by DEQ. I believe that the Lake Thunderbird Conservancy District, actually, there was a lawsuit between them and the city of Moore, Norman, and Oklahoma City.
And 27 businesses down here.
Yeah, it was a, it was a pretty big deal, but I believe that the lawsuit was settled and DEQ did take the ownership of making sure that each individual city complies with the, what the judge's ruling was.
Because when the judge ruled, it was done with the businesses. So was it not done with the cities?
My understanding is that, no, the judge's ruling was that ODQ would then make sure that the cities of Moore, Norman, and Oklahoma City follow through in doing their best efforts to clean up the Lake Thunderbird watershed.
Okay, is this something we're going to be required to do annually?
Yes, until Lake Thunderbird is removed from the impaired waters list, which is solely dependent on how quickly people can be educated to quit putting in the pesticides and grass clippings and trash and motor oil into the watershed.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item?
Do you know if, assuming, I guess, the DEQ or the city, do we know ourselves, do we test our runoff or test our portion of the River?
We do. That's another part of the requirements of the Lake Thunderbird TMDL order. We have an entire plan that was approved by city council about a year ago or so that goes through all the requirements we have to do, and testing is part of that. And we actually use Veolia to test our water, stormwater output at certain points at the south part of the city where it flows into Norman. We've only done that once, because like I said, this is our first year doing this. So over time, we will get some information and more data to see if we're making improvements or not, if there's times of the year that are worse or times of the year that are better, trying to focus in on what the problem is and how we can fix it.
Okay. We've cleaned out that thing a couple of times with the county commissioners, down to the city limits, and Norman doesn't participate with the county commissioners to help them clean it out the rest of the way. Now, I'm not sure why.
I don't know.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item number seven is consider approval of memorandum of understanding between Norman, Oklahoma City, and Moore. Have we done that one yet? That's what I just did. Sorry about that. Item number eight, consider approval of resolution number 89017 selecting Garber Engineering to perform the citywide budget inspection, or bridge inspections for the 2018-2020 ODOT bridge inspection contract.
Mayor and Council, every other year, ODOT does require the city of Moore to provide inspections of all off-system bridges. They do provide the funding for this, and the off-system bridges are just the city's local bridges on the local residential streets or local collector streets. The ODOT does provide funding for this, and they even provide, let us pick our own engineer. But they do provide a preferred engineers, they do provide a qualified engineers list that we can choose from. This year, we interviewed engineering firms of Lochner, Kimley Horn, and Garber Engineering. Myself and Richard Sandofer and Danny Weiss, the Assistant Community Development Director, sat in on the interviews. And city staff recommends Garber Engineering for this year's contract. They seem to understand the make and choose of a smaller city like Moore, and we feel that they would best fit our needs. And just as a note, we do try to change engineers each time because the engineers are all qualified, and they're all required to do the exact same thing. So we like to spread around who we select. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you know how many, how many bridges do we have?
We had last year, I believe it was around 23 or 24. I think we've added one or two since last year, or the last inspection cycle, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is approve an interlocal agreement with the city of Oklahoma City for grading drainage and surfacing of certain streets within respective communities.
Mayor and Council, this is a similar agreement that we've had with Cleaton County for a number of years. And within the past calendar year, we've had two projects where this would have been beneficial if we had the interlocal agreement with Oklahoma City. One was over there where we had the sidewalks on Southwest 19th Street, west of Santa Fe. When we got to the city limit line, we had a drainage problem. Actually, that was in Oklahoma City limits, and our contractor was on site building sidewalks. So we couldn't, we still haven't resolved that problem. And the bad part about that is those school kids there from the Oklahoma City side can't get to the signal light in the protected crosswalks. So there's an unprotected crosswalk there on the Oklahoma City side. The second time was this summer when we resurfaced the two miles to southeast 19th between Bryant and Sunny Lane. If you drive that very often and go through that intersection there at southeast 19th and Sunny Lane, it's rubboard and it's rough. Well, the east half of that intersection is Oklahoma City, the west half's more. So we couldn't fix it. Both cities were very willing and wanted to fix it, but we, we didn't have this agreement in place. So it's those type of projects, and up and down Sunny Lane, it's back and forth all through that corridor from our North City Limit Line to the south. And it will allow us to do road improvements in a, in a way where the general public would understand it and also be a better section of roadway for the entire mile. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 10 is the consent docket. Item, excuse me. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held November 6, 2017. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017-2018 in the amount of $457,398.97.
May I have your proof?
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any, this is a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 11 is the consent docket. Item A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held November 6, 2016. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017-2018 in the amount of $156,770.72.
May I have your proof?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public, or Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Terry?
Item 12 is the roll call. Trail roll, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Terry Kavner?
Here.
Item 13 is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held October 16, 2017. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held November 6, 2017.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes, item passes. This time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority and convene the city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Item 14 is new business, but the record reflected all the members are still present. Item A, citizens form for items not on the agenda. No one here, would anyone like to speak? Okay? Item B, items from the city council or trustees.
Okay, I just came up to telephone road while going, it's looking wonderful. And I crossed the 19th Street Bridge today, it was marked, freshly marked, and it looks great.
Good. Went the other way, I didn't go see it. Okay, have to do that tomorrow. Item C is items from the city manager's trust management.
Mayor and Council, just a few things this evening. Fairmore Park, with the exception of some very minor things, has been completed and open, so we're excited about that. Attended an ACOG meeting last week on the rail corridor. And so this is a, this is a project where they want to develop a rail corridor from Oklahoma City through Norman and with a couple of stops in Moore. And even though they have yet to determine what their governing body's going to be and, and other logistical things to work out, they're, they're still moving, trying to move forward with this project. And so what the ultimate impact on Moore is remains to be seen, but we'll be sure and keep it monitored and report to council. And I know Councilman Ham is very interested in this also, and worked with him on that. But their, their initial plan does call for two stops in Moore. One at Central Park, and then their initial, their other suggestion was, was somewhere on 19th Street. In a meeting I had with them previously, I suggested that that probably wasn't a good location, but perhaps 34th Street, where the railroad is there, where there's land that could be acquired might be a better option. So, and none of the other sites, none of the other cities have been acquired either. So everything is a, is a tremendous work in progress, but they continue to talk about it and continue to move forward as if it will come to fruition someday. So like I say, we will, we will keep you posted on this.
And, and I would just add something to that, that there is a pretty significant cost or investment that the city's made to continue being one of the cities that's a part of that discussion. And I think we had a three or four-year commitment in funds, I can't remember. But something that we really should think about is, is, is it really going to happen before we?
More funds?
Yeah. It was $25,000 a year, wasn't it? It was pretty, pretty. It was a little more than that.
I think it was more. And it was three years, right?
Yes, three years, and it was, I can't remember the different increments. It was different amounts each of those three years. But just council and Brooks, and maybe as that comes back before us, we, I don't know. I mean, it's going to be a billion dollar plus project. And who's going to pay for all of that? I think there is, have, to have help from the federal government, but the city of Moore is going to have to, as well as Norman, all these other cities. So it's just a lot to talk about.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things to work out with that. Last week was the reopening of the Moore Faith Medical Clinic there at the Servethmore Building. The, the space has been renovated, and I was there, it looks really good. They've, they've done a good job, and, and now have adequate space to be able to serve the citizens that go there. and, and now have adequate space to be able to serve the citizens that, that go there. Uh, they're open on Thursday nights and, and I think the third Saturday of, of every month. So it's, uh, glad to see that done. Also, last week was the groundbreaking for Johnny's. So it wa- it was well attended and, and glad to see that going. And as the, as the mayor and council know, sometimes the, uh, the economic development things, they, they come together fairly easily. Uh, you know, pretty, pretty clean. And then other times, uh, there's a lot of work involved and there's a lot of ups and downs. And so I'd like to acknowledge Deidre Every's efforts in keeping the conversations going so that some of these things can come to fruition. Thank you, Deidre.
Yeah.
Did Johnny give a timeline at all? Are they actually moving dirt right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. All got?
Okay. Item, item fifteen is executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider to adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, consider approval of the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen contract between the city of Moore and the IAFF Local twenty forty-seven as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, three oh seven B dash two. Do we have a motion to convene to executive session?
Make a motion, we convene to executive session.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. We adjourn to executive session. Hopefully, that will take off. Right.
[coughing]
Could you call the roll back from executive session, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Terry Kavner?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. Okay, do we have a motion from executive session?
I make a motion that we approve the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen contract between the city of Moore and the IAFF Local twenty forty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, and I want to thank everybody on both sides who worked on this contract. It's been a long time. Thank you very much. Okay, item number sixteen is adjournment.
So, second.
Tell me, make the motion. Jason made the second.
And who made the motion?
Terry.
Terry Kavner. For some reason, Terry, you don't talk very.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
We already.
I think so too.